Thank you, meeting is called to order. We're ready for the invocation from Lavelle Land. Please rise.
Are we on? I may ask those of you that would to please bow your head as we pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this time right now. We bless you for bringing us together. Now, Father, we pray, Lord God, that your Spirit of peace will rest in this place and not a spirit of contention. We pray for a spirit of unity. We pray that you will have your way. We pray that you will bless those today that are making decisions and discussing issues. We pray that you will bless them with wisdom and guide them in everything that they do. Bless them so that this city continues to prosper and thrive and be a blessed city. We thank you for this gathering and your presence right now, and we give you all the praise. We bless you and thank you. In Jesus' name, amen. Amen.
Thank you very much. The pledge will be done by Professor Williams. Pledge to the flag of the United States of America. The three public places for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Before our regularly scheduled meeting, we have a meeting of the Assistant Housing Governing Board. Amadora Lopez is here, so the clerk will call the roll.
Board Member DeCiccio. Board Member Gallego.
Here.
Board Member Gates.
Here.
Board Member Lopez.
Here.
Board Member Noakowski.
Here.
Board Member Pastor. Board Member Valenzuela.
Here.
Board Member Williams. Vice Chair Waring.
Here.
Chairman Stanton.
Here.
We have a motion for the minutes.
A motion to approve of...
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it so ordered. We have a motion to approve the resolution.
Move to approve, yes.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it so ordered. And that concludes our meeting of the Assistant Housing Governing Board. Thank you. Now, can we have a, the clerk call the roll for a regularly scheduled meeting?
Councilman DeCiccio. Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilman Gates.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor. Councilman Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
Here.
Thank you. We do have an interpreter here today, Judy Holm. Judy, would you raise your hand, please? Thank you, and introduce yourself.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Judy, soy interprete de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Well, the city clerk, read the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G5978 through G5986, S41417 through S41435, and resolutions numbered 21286 through 21290.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion to approve of the mayor's boards and commission nominations?
So moved.
Nobody wants to second the mayor, board, and commission nominations?
Second.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eyes appear to have it, do have it so ordered. I'm going to swear in. If we have any members, new members who would like to join us, to my right, your left, we'll do the swearing in.
Yes.
Nice to see you. Pleasure code. Directing where I want you to stand.
Okay.
Everybody ready, Mike? Okay. Please put your right hand.
We're just about done, I have to say. This is how the American people talk.
And their true faith and allegiance to the same. And defend them against all enemies, war and harassment. And then say the name of the office. Number one is about... According to best liability, so. Alright, I'll get him. Thanks very much. Congratulations, you're all smart. And if you'd like to go up there and meet my colleagues, I would encourage you to go up there, be well, saying that you're...
I need to get the six, hold them out. Okay. Thank you.
She needed you. I think she's looking for stipulations.
Thank you.
Planning to have them, or do you have them? She may need them for something else, too, but she... Yeah, stipulations, but do you have it, or they have it? I'll get it, I'll get it.
Hi. You guys remember me? Thank you very much.
I'm sort of wondering, who's the hip and duper? First, you're bouncing down, well, I don't know. Oh. Long print shirt or something, I don't know. But you're sick. I heard it. Well, I'm like, give me some love. Yeah. Well, you can learn it from me, then.
I'll have to...
Useful skill. Alright. Thank you very much. Alright, everybody ready to move on?
Yes.
We have a motion, or can we have a motion, please, on items 1 through 20, the liquor licenses?
Approval of items 1 through 22.
Thank you, we do have...
Back in that?
1 through 20, correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. We do have some cards, all are in favor, not wishing to speak. Do we have any further discussion on items 1 through 20? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it so ordered. Councilman Noakowski, do you want to discuss item 21?
Let me look at...
We do have a card opposed.
If we can listen to the cards first.
Okay. We have a card, oh, it's from our officer, I'm sorry, Officer Gonzalez. Is he here? Officer Gonzalez, do I talk about item 21? Discount King Market? Oh, that's alright.
Officer, officer.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. Is this on? Mayor, council members, is the mayor here? Nope. Council members, Officer Gonzalez, City of Phoenix, badge number 6190, I'm out of 1902 South 16 Streets, Central City Precinct, and I'm here on behalf of the City of Phoenix Police Department in regards to liquor license for the Discount King Market at 2101 West Adams Street. We're recommending denial on this liquor license for a few reasons. One of them is that the applicant failed to provide that he had a... He did not mark that he had a criminal record. What happened is he was arrested, it was dismissed, however, on the state liquor, you're supposed to put within 10 years if you've been cited, arrested, regardless of the disposition. The second reason was this applicant I had also interviewed, and he had placed an application for a separate location in March 19th of 2014 at 320 North 48th Street. And that did come before the city council, and the city council had recommended for denial on those regarding that issue. In that particular situation, he had also said that he was a manager at a different location and failed to provide that information. He was a manager at Chevron, and at that location, they had several violations having to do with liquor violations, which ranged from April 2012 to January 2014. However, on this application, he changed the title from manager to cashier. During the time of this application, I was able to interview the applicant, and I did ask him about the information. He did say the reason he did not mark yes to the arrest that he had in October 3rd of 2009, I'm sorry, of 2009, was he had someone else fill it out. And then as far as the manager versus cashier, he said he was assistant manager and he was cashier, however, he said he was not there at the time that these occurred. However, these were brought up at the last city council, the last city council meeting. Based on this information and interviewing him, the same gentleman that I interviewed last year, I don't feel, and we don't feel that based on the fact that he couldn't put the required information from the state liquor board application, and also the previous violations that he had stated he was a manager during the timeframe had liquor license violations, that we don't feel that he is going to be, be able to demonstrate reliability, capability, and qualification for this liquor license. So we recommend denial.
Thank you. Councilman Noakowski?
Mayor, is the applicant here?
Is the applicant here? It appears not, we do not have a card.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to disapprove this item based on the police recommendation and the favor to provide all the information that the police officers asked for.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or, I'm sorry, roll call.
Aye.
I apologize.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates. Gates. Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams. Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Thank you, by a vote of, I believe it was eight to nothing. Eight to nothing, motion passes. Councilman Gallego, do you want to make a motion on item 22?
Is the applicant, or do we have any cards on that item?
We have the applicant, and we have one person opposed. Who would you like to...
Okay, so I'll go ahead and hear the staff report and take the cards.
Okay. Do we have, do we... Alright, Denise, would you please give us a report?
Mayor members of, mayor members of the council, this request is for an ownership transfer of a Series 6 liquor license from Bat TV LLC to TTP-1 LLC for a bar. This location was previously licensed for liquor sales as Ice Picks Video Bar and is currently operating with an interim permit. Consideration may be given to the applicant's personal qualifications. Staff recommends disapproval of this application based on a police department recommendation for disapproval, and it is my understanding that there is a police department representative here to provide a report.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here, Michael Cummings? Yes, please come up and...
Okay, I received the letter stating of the disapproval. We have since actually removed that member from our LLC and from the, and amended our liquor license application. These are the stamped documents that we filed with both.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Would you be opening to, open to continuing, so I represent District 8, and your business is in my district, would you be open to continuing this item and we can sit down with staff and get everything in order and...
Definitely.
Wonderful.
Mayor members of the council, if the applicant could provide a 60-day waiver, that would be great.
Wonderful. Would you be willing to provide that waiver?
I'm sorry?
Would you be willing to provide a 60-day waiver so that...
Definitely.
We can sit down and...
For sure.
Thank you for coming today, it helps us with this process when we have people at the council meetings and can have this conversation, so with that, I move that...
Do you want to hear, we have it, someone against?
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have someone against, so yes, we should...
We do have, before we make that motion, we do have someone who signed in against, Ida Along. Yes, please come on down. And if I mispronounce that, I apologize. I just noticed the address. You are...
I am with the police department, yes.
Are with the police, I apologize, yes. It did not say that here, but I should have seen the address, thank you. So, do we have what we need?
So, I think we'll, if it works for you, we'll see what information they provide, and our office can circle back with the police department. That's fine, no problem. Unless there's anything... No, that's fine with us. The staff part was very, we appreciated that and had a lot of good detail, so... Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you for being here.
Councilman Gallego, you want to make your motion?
With that, I move we continue this. Do we have a date?
Mayor members of the council, we could move it to February 4th, 2015?
Wonderful, I move we continue to February 4th. Second.
You've heard the motion, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it so ordered. Councilwoman Williams, do you want to make a motion on item 23?
Move approval.
Do we have a second? Second, thank you. We have one card available, not wishing to speak. Linda Lynch and David Brood. If you're still not wish, you're okay with not speaking? Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. You've heard the motion, I believe there's a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it so ordered. Can we have a motion on item 24?
Move approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second? Do we have a staff presentation or any discussion about item 24? Okay. Any further questions? No cards? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it so ordered. We have old business, it's an item that was continued. Councilman DeCiccio, I believe you're on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, so you have a, this is the one you have a conflict on, so just...
That's true. Potential conflict.
I believe this item is to be continued until February 4th at the request of the applicant.
Okay. Second? Any further discussion about the continuance?
And I'm not voting, Mayor.
He's not voting.
Vice Mayor.
I think I've got that. Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eyes appear to have it, do have it so ordered. We have a motion to withdraw item 26, is that correct, Chris? Okay.
So moved. Second.
Second? Motion to withdraw, item 26, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it so ordered. We're at item 27. The city clerk is going to read the title.
Item 27, ordinance G5978, and ordinance amending chapter 23, Article 4, Phoenix City Code, by amending section 23-52(c) relating to prostitution, soliciting an act of prostitution and related offenses and penalties, directing the city manager to implement a mandatory booking policy and declaring an emergency.
Thank you very much. Item 27 deals with human trafficking. I co-chaired the task force along with Sarah Suggs from the O'Connor House. I believe we also have members in the audience from the Human Trafficking Task Force. This is a great day for those of us, we really appreciate Mayor Stanton putting this together. So Mayor, I believe you're on the phone, and we really appreciate that very much. Unfortunately, we did have a very tragic weekend. Lieutenant Robert Conrad served on our task force and has been an invaluable help. Unfortunately, for those of you who may have seen it in the news, his daughter was tragically killed this weekend in an accident, so I would ask everybody to rise and stand for a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you, and her honor. Thank you, please be seated. And our condolences go out to the Conrad family. We've worked with him a lot this year, and his help was invaluable in getting us to this day, so. We do have, I believe, a staff report to start, if you would. Sort of laid the groundwork, this is coming out of our recommendations from our task force, and I appreciate very much. Again, if you are on the task force, would you please rise? I know I saw at least one member. Oh, thank you, Judge, we appreciate it very much, thank you. So go ahead, Deanna, and give the presentation if you would.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Deanna Johnovich, Deputy City Manager with the City of Phoenix. I have to my left Assistant Chief Renteria, to my right Acting City Prosecutor Vicki Hill, and we come before you today to talk about the work of the Human Trafficking Task Force. As you recall, the mayor appointed the task force a year ago, and at that time, there was some very specific areas that our Human Trafficking Task Force was charged and in developing and working under. There's four specific areas that we were conducting our work. Those four areas are outreach and awareness, law enforcement, there's also two other areas, one of which we want to talk specifically about today. So you can see up on the PowerPoint, outreach and awareness, law enforcement, victim services and training are the four key components that our efforts have been focused on. We're here today specifically to talk about the law enforcement area. There are two recommendations that we're moving forward in the law enforcement area. The first one is specifically to amend Phoenix City Code 23-52(c). This is the area in which individuals who are soliciting prostitution services and charged under that particular city code will now be required to attend a mandatory educational component if you so choose to move that forward. The second piece of this is a mandatory booking policy for all individuals, again, arrested under 23-52a. When we talk specifically about the educational component, the Human Trafficking Task Force was very clear that we needed to send a strong message to the community that this activity is not acceptable, and as a result of that, one of the ways to do that is to require a mandatory educational component for a couple reasons. Number one, to educate the individuals on the ramifications of their actions and the impact it has to the community, as well as serve as a deterrent, again, to send a message that this is not going to be acceptable in our community. The second recommendation of the task force is the mandatory booking policy. And again, this does increase awareness in our community. Currently, it's at the prerogatory of the police to determine when they are arresting somebody that is soliciting prostitution, whether or not they're going to write the citation or take them down to central booking. Again, the task force felt like in sending a strong message, we need to recommend a mandatory policy that everybody that is arrested under that particular 23-52 is going to be required to go down to mandatory booking, and they will be required to appear before the judge, and this will potentially have a cost increase to it. If you look at the number of arrests that we made last year, there were 22 arrests made of the 150 that were actually charged with this. If we looked at the 150 and we were to book all of them, the increased cost would be about $42,000. One of the providers that spoke at subcommittee had indicated the services that are necessary for a victim of human trafficking ranges about $60,000 per client, so while there is an increase, they did believe that it would have a huge impact in the community and alleviate some of those costs that we're having to partake in in providing services to the victims. And so with that, again, these are the recommendations of the task force that we are bringing forward to Mayor and council for approval.
Thank you very much for the presentation, I really appreciate it. We do have one card, Rosalind Salmalu.
Hi. I'm Rosalind Salmalu, and I come before you representing Streetlight USA. We are based out in Glendale, Arizona, and we are the largest residential facility which serves young adolescent girls ages 11 through 17 who have been sexually traumatized with a specialty in sex trafficking. I wanted to make everybody aware of this, especially with the Super Bowl coming up. We did set aside some beds because of this issue, so that when law enforcement is out there and they may come across a child victim, that they know about Streetlight USA and can come bring them to our facility. We take a three-pronged approach into their healing, which is through awareness, prevention, and direct care. We come out here and we speak to audiences such as yourself and other organizations that invite us to come and speak, to educate people on the issue of sex trafficking and that it is not just an overseas issue, but it happens right here in Arizona. The second is preventive, is preventative measures, and then we also have direct care, where we house up to 48 girls right now at our facility, and right now, we have 40. Like I said, those other beds are being saved because of the Super Bowl, you know, for some obvious reasons. I would like to invite the council to come out and tour our facility, and anybody here as well who is interested in coming to tour our facility and, you know, hopefully be able to partner with you all. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you taking the time to come down. She used the word "girls," as we talked about in subcommittee, so those of you who are on subcommittee, this is redundant, but for our audience, the average age to start in, and I don't want to call it a life because that implies that it's somehow pleasant, so, but the average age that people unfortunately get dragged into human trafficking and the victims I'm talking about is 12 or 13. So we are talking about kids, little girls primarily, and it's, it's just not acceptable. The Super Bowl was mentioned, but we on the task force have pledged that we are going to make sure that our efforts don't stop, we are not going to disband in any way, in fact, we're going to look to make penalties tougher, we're going to try to make sure more resources are directed to helping these victims. All too often, frankly, I think the, again, predominantly males, the Johns, if you were, who are making all this possible by throwing money at this, and this is an activity they want to engage in, we want to make sure through advertising and other methods that come out of the task force, and punishment frankly, that this is not an activity they want to engage in again. It is disgusting, it is abhorrent, and it shouldn't be tolerated. We don't want to have it here in Phoenix. It's not simply something about, it just happens during one big activity like the Super Bowl, that's actually not the case. It's a daily activity, which is shocking to most of us who don't engage in it. Fortunately, that's the majority of us, and I think the majority of us should put our foot, feet down, excuse me, and say, no more. This is absolutely not acceptable here in Phoenix or anywhere in Arizona. We have pledged to try to help our sister cities. Obviously, we're the biggest, we've got, so we've got by definition the biggest vice squad, but we definitely want to be a resource, not only for other cities around Arizona, but also around the country. Other places have Super Bowls, other places have the similar problem, and we would like to eradicate it. That probably won't be possible, human nature being given what it is, but we would certainly like to make sure that we can limit it as much as possible and save as many of the victims as we can. Anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, Councilwoman Williams?
I really want to thank the mayor, you Vice Mayor, and the members of the task force. You know, over the years, there's been different task force dealing with different segments. I mean, remember the victims, we've done a lot of work with them, but somehow the Johns always escaped. They never got caught, and so I am delighted that you are bringing the hammer down on them. They will be in a very difficult position to explain when they go home why they've been in jail, and...
Or why their car got confiscated.
Yep, and I am most supportive. I think you've done a great job, I know this is a first step, and I congratulate you on a big first step, because I think this is really setting a direction for our community and that it's not going to be tolerated. We do have the emergency clause on, so it will take effect immediately and in time for the Super Bowl, so that hanky panky can be curtailed right away. So thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilman Noakowski?
Vice Mayor, in our subcommittee, we had testimonies from young ladies, and, I mean, we're really going to be changing people's lives, and I just really want to thank you for your leadership in leading this task force and all those members on the task force, and all the services that we're going to be providing, the counseling, the support, and I think that's one of the major keys to this, this proposal, is that we're going to be giving support out there also, so I want to thank you for your leadership, thank you for having this task force, and thank you for the leadership of the individuals on that task force providing the services that these ladies need and preventing future incidents in the future. And also, I'd like to thank you once again, Vice Mayor, for all your leadership in this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. At the risk of making this sound like an awards show, I too have people to thank, Deanna and Vicki and Tamara and your team, you guys did a great job pulling this all together, we really appreciate it very much. Again, we mentioned Lieutenant Conrad, he was focal point of our efforts in explaining sort of the process to us, and we really appreciate it, and we're sorry he couldn't be here today. We also had members from the county attorney's office, the attorney general's office, so it was a widespread effort, and we appreciate very much their service. I've got to thank Ashley Bunch from my office, I think she's out in the audience, she did She did a fantastic job of coordinating everything and frankly doing research. We tried to model what has worked in other cities, not just about the Super Bowl, but just what people are doing in general in other towns and cities to make sure that this doesn't happen. So we're excited about our efforts, but this is just, to my mind at least, and I think most of the task force members, just a good first step, and we are looking forward to doing more in the future and continuing our efforts to fight this. So with that said, Councilman Williams, will you...
I move to approve this item.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. This is actually a roll, is this a roll call vote? It is? All right, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates. Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Thank you. By a vote of eight to nothing, you passed item number 27.
So, Vice Mayor?
Yes. Is that...
My apologies. It's...
We have you down as a no, is that correct? Just kidding, just kidding.
If you could fix that, I would appreciate it.
All right. So yes, all right, so by nine to nothing vote, it passed. Thank you. Sorry, we didn't hear you before, I apologize. So item 28, Councilman Williams?
I would move approval as corrected for the supplementary zoning map.
Do we have any discussion, questions or presentation?
Second.
All right, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Yes, by a vote of eight to nothing, or, excuse me, nine to nothing, item 28 passes. Item 29?
I move approval to amend the city code rezoning app C-11214-3.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion, staff report? You guys want to order a sandwich? No, nothing, all right. Item 29, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Thank you. By a vote of nine to nothing, item 29 passes. Item 30.
I move approval to amend the city code rezoning app C-3514-4.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions, comments? Thank you, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
All right, nine to nothing vote, the item passes. Next item.
I move approval to amend city code rezoning app C-2714-8.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item 31? Seeing none, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Thank you. By a vote of nine to nothing, item 31 passes. Item 32.
I move approval to amend city code ZTA 5-14 concerning lot coverage.
Second.
Thank you. We do have one card, Richard Ray. If necessary, okay, he says it's not necessary. Who am I to argue? Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Thank you. By a vote of nine to nothing, item 32 passes. Councilman DeCiccio, I believe you're on the phone. You have a conflict on items 33 and 34, just seeing that.
That is correct. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome.
I will not be voting on 33 or 34.
Okay, first I need to make the motion to suspend the rules in here, items 33 and 35 with the related ordinances, items 34 and 36.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As appear to have it, do have it so ordered.
Okay, then I would move item 33, which I believe he has declared a conflict.
Yes. Thank you, second?
Second.
Any discussion on item 33? Going once, going twice, seeing none, roll call.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Thank you. By a vote of seven to one, item passes. Item 34.
I would move approval for the amendments to chapter 29.
Second.
Second. Again, Councilman DeCiccio has a conflict. Oh, and the city clerk says he has to read something. What would you like to read?
The title.
All right, fantastic.
Item 34, ordinance G-5984, an ordinance repealing chapter 29, development impact fee ordinance of the Phoenix City Code and adopting a new chapter 29 impact fees.
Thank you. I think we've had a motion and a second.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Yes, by a vote of seven to one, the item number 34 passes. Item 35.
I would move approval of item 35.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? City clerk, do you want to read anything to us? Sing a song? No? He's shaking his head, no? All right, not till the next one. Okay, good. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
By a vote of eight to one, motion passes. Item 36. And I'm sorry, the city clerk does have to read something. It's time, go ahead, read the title, please.
Item 36, ordinance G-5985, an ordinance amending chapter 30 of the Phoenix City Code by repealing the existing chapter 30 in its entirety and adopting a new chapter 30.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, seeing none, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Thank you. By a vote of eight to one, motion passes. Now relating on, moving on to items 37 to 56. Are you ready with the motion?
Do you need to read something? No. Okay. I believe I would, if I understand this, motion to approve items 37 through 56 except 37B, 37T, 37X, 39, and 54, noting item 37U is being continued to February 4th, and items 46 and 53 are being withdrawn. However, there is a card on 39 and 46, so, well, I guess 46, do you need to hear since it's included in the motion?
I ask to continue 37U, it can go ahead. It's ready. I got the information I needed.
She got what the information she needed. Okay, so you can add 37 to the motion?
It wasn't in the motion. I need to... U, 37U was not included as an exception.
Okay. All right, we're good. Now, 46 is being withdrawn, but we have two cards. So should we pull it out? We have Diane Barker, I think, and Diane Scher. Don't need to speak. Diane Barker, do you need to speak about 46?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Waring.
It's being withdrawn.
I'm sorry.
So I think technically she's supposed to talk about it being withdrawn. You're really supposed to...
Yeah, I understand that, and also I have a card on 39. I don't know whether you've bypassed that yet, but on 46, I think precedent order stands. I am favorable that you withdraw this because 59 preempts at market price. It sounds like you have a process where you're going to go out in a fair RFP and gather the price lines before you would ever make a excise tax through a municipal property excise tax. So my statement is I am in favor that you withdraw this, and I support 59, and when you do go back for the property tax, I hope it's all within the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Greta Rogers on number 46.
I just for the record, could I...
Yes.
Want to clarify the motion I made, that item 37U is not being continued. Okay.
I was advised 46 is withdrawn, but I don't have any reason for it. What's the reason?
Anybody want to answer a question?
Vice Mayor, I can say that. We're requesting to withdraw item 46 because we need to use the information that we gather from item 59 to then return with more precise numbers. Originally, we thought that we would have more time on 46, but we do not, so we are going to wait on 46 until the RFP is concluded.
Well, 46 and 59 are interrelated. So are you withdrawing 59 also?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, we are asking to continue with item 59 when we get to that point in the agenda so that the RFP can be issued. Upon the conclusion of the RFP, then we would return to the council with something like item 46 based on the information from the RFP.
Okay, I'll wait to comment on 46 then when you bring it back, and I'm glad you're going to put them consecutively or close together because they're interrelated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We need a second. Do we want a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
All right, so a vote of nine to nothing, motion passes. Now, are we on 37B? All right.
Can I lump 37B, 37T, and 37X together for approval? So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? We don't have any cards, correct? Okay. All those, roll call, I'm sorry.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Thank you. By an eight to one vote, motion passes. Now, we're at, are we at 37U?
No. No, we're at 39, and I would move approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I think we had some cards on this one. Does anybody have any discussion, or should we take the cards? 39.
39.
No discussion, we'll take the cards. Dee Dee Barker. All right, we're going to move on to somebody else, Tom Lewis.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to make a few comments about Broadstone Arts District project we're very excited about. I also wanted to provide two letters of support that we'd like to add to the record. One from Mr. Jim Ballinger, the director of the Phoenix Art Museum, and the second from Ms. Lee Roberts, the CEO of the Arizona School for the Arts, both neighbors of the property being discussed. As you probably know, the project lies immediately to the east of the Phoenix Art Museum and Phoenix Theater within the newly formed Central Arts District within downtown, which we felt gave us a fantastic opportunity to create an urban environment that would have all the components that our urban residents are looking for, including proximity to light rail and transit, proximity to downtown employment, and all the civic, cultural, and sporting venues that downtown has to offer. We also felt like we had a great opportunity to improve upon the site plan that had been approved in 2008. And in December of last year, the Design Review Committee approved the most recent site plan that most notably made one significant change, and it relocated the front entry of the property from the southeast corner along McDowell to the southwest corner at the closest point to light rail and Central Avenue, which we felt allowed us to do two very important things. Number one, to create the beginning of a pedestrian environment along the McDowell corridor, corridor, and number two, to create a signature pedestrian and public space that will be known as the Central Arts Pavilion. The idea for the Central Arts Pavilion came about through a lot of collaboration with city staff and our neighbors, including the Art Museum, the Phoenix Theater, the Midtown Museum District, and a host of others, that really centered around two important pieces of feedback. The first is how do we improve the pedestrian experience downtown, and how do we engage the public in a downtown setting such as we have? And so we've designed a number of elements that we feel do just that. The Central Arts Pavilion will be an 11,000-square-foot exterior public courtyard along with a 2,000-square-foot interior public space. And we envision this area will be used for art galleries, public functions such as movie nights, yoga classes, farmers' markets, functions prior to events next door at the theater and museum, and a host of other public and civic events. In order to create the space designated for the pavilion, we've reduced the overall unit count for the property from 300 units down to 280, 300 being approved in 2008 during the zoning entitlements. We've also determined to locate the parking for the project in a two-level subterranean parking garage beneath the building, which, one, creates a better living environment, but, two, responds to feedback we've received from both the community and residents that people don't want to look at structured parking garages, and it also relieves some of the congestion along Alvarado that residents spoke in favor of us being able to do. We're also going to be making significant sidewalk, landscape, and roadway improvements to the fringes along McDowell and Alvarado to keep them consistent with the pedestrian designation of both those roads. Lastly, we wanted to highlight a couple of quick items on how this proposed development is consistent with a downtown strategic vision, and I think it is in a couple of important ways. Number one, it creates an urban redevelopment in a prominent downtown location and transforms a declining Class C hotel into a vibrant urban community. It'll provide housing options for a growingly diverse population downtown, and it'll inject the Central Arts District with roughly 400 new residents. It'll also provide an innovative, high-quality design. It'll create pedestrian-level amenities and promote walkability. It'll provide a positive tangible economic benefit to the city, as outlined in an economic study done by Elliot Pollak and his group. And lastly, it's had strong support and collaboration from the local community, which I think suggests excitement for a new project that'll create 24-hour activity downtown. And lastly, a quick word on Alliance Residential. Our founding principles have been active in multifamily development in Phoenix for over 25 years. Our headquarters is here in Phoenix, although we're active in 29 major metropolitan areas across the country. And last year, we received a number of nice accolades, a couple of which I'd like to mention. Foremost, we were named the number-one developer for multifamily in the United States, as well as the number-one luxury management company in the U.S. by Multifamily Executive Magazine. And lastly, something we're very proud of, in 2014, two of our most recent projects, Broadstone Camelback and Broadstone Lincoln, both received LEED Platinum Certification, which suggests our commitment to green building practices and is also something we're pursuing for Broadstone Arts District. So we thank you very much for your time and interest in our project and for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. If that seemed like to the audience more than two minutes, because it was. Andrew Bisken and Rich Barber both donated their time. Is that accurate, if you guys are here? All right, they're nodding. It's in agreement. We have Rick DeGraw.
May I speak, Your Honor? I mean, Vice Mayor, on this item?
Did I say we were done speaking? I did not. Rick DeGraw. Pass? Okay, thank you very much. Margaret Dietrich.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may, we have a number of speakers who would be willing to speak in support of the project if the Council would like to hear from them.
Hi, I'm Margaret Dietrich from the Midtown Museum District Neighborhood, and this is actually in our Midtown neighborhood. And with the emergence of the Central Arts District, we are going to have a lot more visitors to that area, as well as all that's going to be happening at Hans Park. Not only will we have a lot of visitors, but we'll have more people that want to come and live in that area because of all those amenities. Our area definitely needs some attention to get it kind of cleaned up. The property at Central and McDowell, the big vacant lot that's been empty forever, Lenar is going to put a beautiful project, and we're really eager also for this Alliance project to take a rather tired hotel and make it into a very nice community place. And Alliance has put a fair amount of effort into making this building look like it belongs in the Central Arts District, rather than something that belongs in Scottsdale. So we're very pleased with their efforts on behalf of that, with the community plaza for entertainment and the reception space. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Barker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Diane Barker in District Seven. I support the project. I live downtown. I've seen the benefit of having residents down here. The only question I ask of the City Council is that we've asked for an abatement for eight years, which means that there's 20 years of giblet, there's no tax. Typically, I've seen 20 to 25 years, but eight years adds on to that. Are we going in a direction where we are giving away? I want the city to offer benefits, but I don't want the city to give away. I want the city to be a good businessperson and receive. So I question this, and on this or any other process in the future, to look to see what we're offering, is it fair? And the developer, they're going to come here. We've got a lot of benefits, believe it.
Thank you very much. We have four cards in favor not wishing to speak. Don Cuth, Billy Shields, Michael Leib, and Dan Clocky. Any of you guys want to change your mind, come up here and speak? No? Edify us? No? Shaking heads, no? Perfect. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Councilwoman Pastor.
Scott, can you answer that question first?
Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, CED Director Christine Mackey and Deputy Director Scott Sumner can address any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I believe the question in the statement was more about the tax abatement and the benefits that the city receives. And for every project that we pursue, there is some unique aspect of the project that requires this kind of incentive in order to make the project work. In this case, it's the fact that almost all of the parking is below ground. So the developer will incur significant expense in making that happen, and the public and the residents and people who walk by will see the benefit of that and that there's not a big garage above grade. And the incentive is really intended to bridge that gap and make the project work.
Okay, thank you. This project is in District Four. As has been stated earlier, it's right next to the Phoenix Art Museum, the Phoenix Theater, and it's a great area and space where we can build connectivity and vibrancy in that area, but also connect to the Margaret Hans Park. And ASA is within the area, so it's a great property to revitalize and make vibrant. I would like to make a motion. May I do so?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve subject to an additional condition. Prior to execution of the agreements, the developer will enhance the design to be more unique and consistent with the art district theme, and to improve the connectivity with shade and with the Phoenix Art Museum and Phoenix Theater. Such plans shall be submitted to the city's Community and Economic Development Department for review and approval. The purpose of this is not only do I want to see a vibrant space and connectivity and walkability and people around that area, the other piece for me is to make sure it is unique and it is part of the arts district, and so that it really has a feel of vibrancy that people want to come, hang out, and be a part of. And it has to do with really building the character of Phoenix, because I believe all of us have an opportunity to really build Phoenix within that area. And 20 years from now, or even 40 years from now, when my children, or hopefully some grandchildren, are there, can look at that space and at that moment say, I think that should be designated as a historic designation. Agree with me, Vice Mayor?
Keep my thoughts to myself.
Yes, please.
No, I'm just kidding. We agree on some things.
So I do would like to see some of that there, within that space, so.
And I'd like to second that. And it's right across the street is District Seven, and what a great investment for the city of Phoenix. I mean, we've worked with the Cancer Survivor Park that we have right there, connecting to the Margaret Hans Park, and all the great amenities that we have in downtown Phoenix. This is just going to help to bring more families to this urban space that we're building in downtown Phoenix. So I really want to thank the developer, thank the leadership of Councilwoman Pastor for really pushing and making sure that the arts community is taken care of, and that we've heard you loud and clear. And thank you, Laura, for your leadership in making sure that it's walkable and rideable and that we have the shade that we need here in the city of Phoenix. So with that, I'd like to second that.
And I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Yes, Councilwoman Gallego.
Just wanted to thank Councilwoman Pastor for her leadership on this issue. When we use this type of incentive, the community's been very clear with us. They want high-quality projects and ones that reflect the community in which they'll be. So I think having good natural landscaping with shade is very valuable. We're also very glad that the developer is pursuing LEED certification. I think that means a lot to have that high-quality, environmentally-friendly certification and that it is a more urban feel with parking the way that they designed it to be really part of our downtown. So appreciate the work that the community and developer has done on this, and thank you to Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, I think we've got a motion, a friendly amendment, and a second to that. Is that correct? So we're good? All right, you guys are all nodding. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
By a vote of seven to two, motion passes. Next item is number fifty-four.
I would move approval, but I think Councilwoman Gates wants to make a comment.
That's what it says here. We get a second, and then Councilwoman Gates, are you on the phone?
I am.
All right, you have some comments about number fifty-four.
Customer care.
Yes.
billing system.
Vice Mayor, thanks for the opportunity to speak on this. I will be supporting this item. It's an effort that has been ongoing for quite a while to get our billing system up to speed and specifically getting our residents to a position where they can utilize online banking and electronic forms of payment. Frankly, it's taken a long time, but I'm really happy to see that we're getting to this point, and we're going to be providing the accessibility and ease of payment that our residents have become accustomed to with other utilities.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Thank you. We've got a second. We've got a motion, we've got a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Thank you. By a vote of nine to nothing, item fifty-four passes. We're moving on to new business. Items fifty-seven through sixty-two, do we have a motion, Councilwoman Williams?
I would move approval of item fifty-seven through sixty-two, except fifty-eight and fifty-nine.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion before you. Any further discussion? No cards?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick one on number sixty. Just want to make sure, because it wasn't in the CCR, that the cap is $10,000. I got that confirmed by staff. I just need them to say it on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, staff, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. We're moving on to item fifty-eight.
Move approval.
Thank you. We have a second. We do have one card. Diane Barker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Waring and Council Diane Barker, District Seven, constituent, I support this. I've had the opportunity to counsel with the deputy manager and staff on the homeless, and it looks like that this is a reform helpful into the homeless situation, and it's apparently not a cost, the way they've organized it, to the city of Phoenix. I know the county was picking up a tab, but I'm convinced from the information that it's a support. Thank you.
Thank you. We had a card from, is it Shayla Sullivan? You're here, not wishing to speak. Don't have to speak. Thank you very much. Sorry if I butchered the first name. I apologize. Thank you. All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Say nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item fifty-nine.
Move approval.
Second.
Gotcha. Okay. We have quite a few cards on this. Would anybody like to speak first, the council? Okay. We have Diane Scher. Diane? You're in favor of this?
I'll wait to see if I need to speak. I'm for the.
Okay. Let me see. I think the three cards we have are in favor that are wishing to speak. Brent McCarthy? Yes. Okay. And Diane Barker.
Okay, can you help me out? Is this item sixty?
It's fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I've been in support of this. This is the RFP, which is analogous to the one forty-six. I am for the assurances of a fair RFP. Thank you.
Thank you. Greta Rogers, you had a card on fifty-nine. While we wait, Chad Colby, not wishing to speak, is in favor. Jeff Marisol, not wishing to speak, in favor. Looks like Chrisa Elmer in favor, not wishing to speak. Jonathan Sullivan in favor. Available to speak if necessary. And Lisa Allen in favor, not wishing to speak.
Vice Mayor, Members of Council, and attendees, my name is Greta Rogers. I've been at subcommittee meetings too this past fall on the subject, which, as I said earlier, is related to the item withdrawn, number forty-six. My main concern here is that this be handled with great precision, integrity, and microscopic scrutiny. And the reason I'm saying this is because I have had inside information that is reliable that early on in the discussions of this greater subject of replacing the IT and telecom system in the city, which is antique, there's been bleeding going on. That's unlawful. It's collusion. And we're talking telecom here. That's governed by federal law. I'm party to one suit that is present and current against this city, and I would have no hesitancy if I have reasonable, provable fact that the city is guiding this to bring a federal case against you. I don't want to do it. It's unnecessary. You've each sworn an oath in the office you took. You followed with no exception. And I want nothing less than that done on this greater subject of the largest capital investment the city will have made since the '05 bond issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, let me just make a statement. First of all, this is the highest priority for our Chief Information Officer, Debbie Cotton, to get this done, and she's been working very closely with the City Manager's Office and our purchasing professionals. And I assure you that this is not being guided, as was stated, and will be conducted with the highest levels of scrutiny and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any discussion? Councilwoman Gallego.
And is the company that is helping us put together the RFP, will they bid for it, or they do not compete in that space?
Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, Deputy City Manager Paul Blue, who's been working with our Chief Information Officer, Debbie Cotton, they can answer those questions.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. The firm that we have selected to help us conduct this effort is not bidding on this in any way whatsoever. They are merely a professional services firm. The reason we've selected them is because this is their business. They help cities around the country do probably a dozen or more of these types of efforts every year, whereas we have not purchased a new phone system since 1988.
Thank you. And thank you to Greta for bringing this to our attention, but we did have the chance to sit with our Deputy City Manager, and there are several different checks and balances. So I feel good about moving forward with this RFP for procurement, and we've given ourselves more time to look at different financing models and make sure that we are carefully selecting the best, so that the earlier vote will give us more time on financing models. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I too heard the same concerns from not just individuals, but from people in the business community, that they felt it was being guided toward primarily Microsoft. And I wanted to make sure that that didn't happen. I've had, I don't know, multiple conversations with the City Manager on that. And I feel very comfortable that Ed and all, Ed is an incredibly honest man, and he just wouldn't let that kind of stuff happen. And I think a lot of it had to come from when we had the Technologies Committee, and they were the main presenters. And I think a lot of that occurred from that meeting. It just looked that way when they were going to be competitors. And I saw that afterwards.
Okay, all set. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
By a vote of eight to one, the motion passes. I think we're now moving on to planning and zoning matters. Is that correct? Item sixty-three to sixty-six.
I believe we'll have a separate motion on sixty-three.
Okay. Item sixty-three, please.
A motion to continue to March fourth, 2015. Item sixty-three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the continuance? No cards? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item sixty-three, so I think we can now do sixty-four through sixty-six. No cards?
Public hearing.
One at a time, okay. Item sixty-four, we're going to open the public hearing. There are no cards? Oh, there are cards. First person is Steve Dreisessen. You here?
Vice Mayor, and Mayor, and Members of the Council, my name is Steve Dreisessen. I'm a District Four resident. I'm here to speak to this matter. I am in favor of the Historic Preservation Plan, but there is one issue which I want to put before you, which I'd like to discuss at a later date. We have, as you know, been fighting with the FAA now for 120 days. We called it an unintended consequence when we engaged in this fight. Excuse me. Part of that unintended consequence is we have residents in our historic districts who are looking to make changes in their homes in order to survive with the added noise that we have. Some of the changes they are looking at are changes of their windows. And some time ago, this council created a policy where we eliminated permitting of window changes, and that has affected our historic districts. Consequently, we are suffering now with the potential of great harm to our historic -- excuse me, to our historic districts. And with that in mind, I would like to revisit this at some future time when we have the chance to take a look at the impact on the districts and other unintended consequences that we have from the environment. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to speaking to you further on this matter. Thank you very much. A little frog in my throat. Thanks.
Jim McPherson from the Arizona Preservation Foundation.
Vice Mayor Waring, Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you for this opportunity. Jim McPherson, 914 East Osborne. 914 East Osborne. I'm volunteer board president of the Arizona Preservation Foundation, our statewide historic preservation advocacy group. Phoenix members of our board and myself reviewed the lengthy document that the staff and the commission have put together, and we are fully supportive of the document and what it contains therein. We would even go beyond and say we would like even more detail from the standpoint of having been in corporate America for so many years, what measures gets done. So we would like to see in future renditions of the plan and maybe the work plan that the Historic Preservation Commission and staff conduct, more measurement of work items, activities of the commission and staff, because I know, and we all know, that what's written in here is good, but I know that they do much more. And some of that work that they do is not documented in this report. And I think not only it's good to let people know what the commission and the staff do, but to also then be able to accurately measure and see what is done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one card in favor, not wishing to speak, Jennifer Bosek. Change your mind? I'll see her out there. Okay. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Oh, sorry. Close the public hearing. I apologize. See the voice of experience here. You've seen a newcomer a thing or two about public meetings. I appreciate that. All right, so any discussion?
Vice Mayor, this is Greg Stanton.
Yes, Mayor.
I just, for the issues that Jim McPherson brought up, I wanted professional staff the opportunity to respond and give their thoughts to it. The feeling that maybe the report, which is a very long and well-written report, but is under-inclusive, it doesn't include all of the items that the Historic Preservation Staff and Commission work on.
Okay. Do we have a staffer who'd like to, Alan?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, could like to introduce Michelle Dodd, who is our Historic Preservation Officer.
Mayor, council, we do an annual work plan that's far more detailed than what you see. And this is a 10-year plan, but we have an annual work plan we also work from that provides greater detail.
Okay. So you're saying if he wants to delve into more reading about the subject, he can contact you and you'll get him the details?
Our annual work plan, Mayor, will provide, I think, some of the details he's looking for. But we are waiting on the approval of this plan to move forward.
Make a motion. I'd move to approve.
Vice Mayor, members of council, if I could clarify, it is a work plan that the Historic Preservation Office puts together and takes to the HP Commission as part of a public meeting. It's really the Historic Preservation Commission's work plan, but they will use this as, this plan as their guiding document to then refine what they want to do on a yearly basis. And so it is getting at the heart of what Mr. McPherson's comments were.
But these items exist already, or they only exist if this gets passed?
The commission already does have a work plan.
It was a little unclear. Thank you. I appreciate it. Any further questions? Because we do have to get a motion.
I would move to approve for the neighborhood's housing and development subcommittee and adopt the related resolution.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
I would like to add, to look at the, once this is passed, to go back and look, NHD, look at the concern that Steve brought up regarding the windows. If we could look at that, that would be great. Alan?
So, Vice Mayor, members of council, if I clarify, I think what Councilwoman Pastor would like to do is have separately from adoption of this plan, have the NHD Subcommittee review the windows issue that some of you recall, a couple of years ago, we went through this. But in light of now the FAA issues, we're happy, so long as Councilwoman Gallego as chair of the Subcommittee consents, we're happy to take that to a future agenda and discuss it.
Great.
Anything else?
We will hope, though, that before then, we have a resolution that makes that no longer an issue. And we hear that the mayor is busy with the FAA trying to get us this resolution. So thank you to the mayor for meeting with the FAA today.
Okay, so we had a motion. We had, I guess, a friendly amendment?
Yes.
And we need a second.
Second.
Terrific. All right, roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
By a vote of eight to one, motion passes. We have to do a public hearing, correct, on item 65?
Can we do 65 and 66 together?
We have to do a public hearing.
Yeah.
And we got to do separate public hearings. So we'll try again. Public hearing is open on item, simply item 65, and we do have a card. Okay, now, can he speak on both of them here, or should he speak separately? Okay. He can speak on both of these items. Greg Cornell? Greg Cornell here?
I'm available with questions.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions about item 65? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve for the Planning Commission's recommendation and adopt the related resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
All right. We're going to open the public hearing on item 66. Same situation. We have a card from Mr. Cornell. Mr. Cornell, again, do you need to speak if necessary?
Question.
Okay. Anybody have any discussion or questions from public hearing? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve for the Planning Commission's recommendation and adopt the related ordinance. And I wish councilmen would speak up down there.
Do we have a second? All right. Ready to vote? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
All right, by a vote of nine to nothing, I think everybody's here. Thank you. By a vote of nine to nothing, item 66 passes. There's no...